Okay, so vote on the vice chair. Sarah, for, uh, this is for Christine for vice chair.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Rochelle?
No.
Christine?
Aye.
Daniel?
No.
And Wendy, yes. So congratulations Christine. Part of this reorganization, I do want to take a moment and thank Heidi and Sue, I saw that Heidi is here, for incredible hard work during an incredible tough year to be on the school board. I really appreciate all that you've done for the students and our community in general. Typically, again, in a real meeting, we'd present them with a small token of our thanks. They are not here. Those have been mailed. I'm hoping when we get together back in person, we can actually get together and honor some of the work that they've done.
Wendy, could I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
Since there was a motion for someone different for chair and vice chair, do we still, should we still go through a vote?
No, because once, so once you've, um, once someone has won, you can't, somebody else can't win. So, yeah, so that's, but that's a good turn around a question. Had you not, then we would have gone and done the next one. And if that one had not, then we would have had to start all over again. It's a cyclical thing. But that's a good reminder. So because we have so many new people here, I need to slow down and describe the process, right? Because there's a lot, you know, for, if you've sat in and, and listened to a lot of school board meetings, it seems like there's some weirdness that we kind of know because there's a lot of process and laws and rules and policies. But when you're new to it, on the other side, there's a lot of magic that I'm hoping that we can sort of explain some of that tonight. So, the organization's done. The next point in our agenda is amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments?
Would this be a point where, um, if there's something for the minutes?
Not yet.
No.
That'll, during minutes. And so,
Oh, that's for five.
I do have an additional resignation.
Okay.
So under personnel.
Yep. Is that going to be non-public?
Nope, that's the, under number 10.
Yep. Um, okay, so I, now, yeah, good. Resignation number two, gotcha.
I also have an amendment. Um, I'd like to talk about moving to in-person.
Um, okay, so we have, we have the school in-person under new business. Are you talking about the school board in-person?
Yeah, school board.
Okay, sure. Well, add that to new business. Okay, anyone else? Great. Okay, so now we are up to the period of time that is public comment. So we will have two of these in the school board meeting, one at the start of the event and one at the end. There's a, a policy that talks about all the rules, but basically, um, public comments twice, you wish to speak, you will pick the little raised hand and then we'll recognize you and give you a chance to talk. If it's not about something on the agenda, we may not comment on it. Please be nice. And yeah, it's about the summary of it. So the policy, if you, if you go to the where school board under community, school board, you'll find a section on policies. So this policy is B E D H, if you need to, um, educate yourself a bit more on that. So we are public. I'm going to open up participants. Uh, let's see. Don't see hands. Um, so if you don't know how to find your hands, if you have the new Zoom, it's under reactions on the bottom, and then there's a raised hand. If you have the old Zoom, if you click on participants, you'll see something that says raise hands, but. See any? So good. All right. Next we'll do is we need to approve the minutes. So for Sarah and Daniel, you can abstain if you weren't at that meeting. So I, I will take a motion to, um, accept the minutes. And then we can talk about what we need to change on them. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you Rochelle. Do I have a second?
I'll second Christine.
That's Christine's second. And okay, so do we have any changes for the February 3rd school board meeting?
Yes, um, I don't think all the communications were included. It's referenced at the end that we had, um, board discussion in regards to deliberative session. And I had brought up about, um, all but one of the emails that I received were for, um, postponing deliberative. And it was brought up that not all of them were that, and I had asked for them to be included in the minutes. And I don't see, um, any in here other than the one.
I put out multiple calls to have all the minutes forwarded to Katie and she included everything we received. So the only thing we can include in the minutes are, are what we get.
Okay, um, since it was mentioned during the meeting that there were other emails, um, I'd like to encourage people who got other emails to please, um, send them to Jackie or Katie so that we can have them as record, please.
Okay, anyone else for February 3rd? All right, how about the school board meeting, uh, February 17th?
I'll move to accept those minutes on this February 17th.
Oh, I thought we're, we approved all to, to do the discussion, but.
Oh, I thought we were doing one at a time. Okay.
Oh, no, I was just asking if there's any amendments or changes, but, but I appreciate the intent. Um, okay, how about any changes to the deliberative session minutes? No? All right, so, um, this is going to be an interesting thing. Maybe we need to split out the third. Because for the 17th school board meeting, the only person present was Christine, right? Cause I wasn't there, Rochelle wasn't there, Daniel and Sarah weren't there.
Yeah, so 17, present about board members, yes, I was the only one there.
Okay, I'm going to abstain on everything on the 17th because I wasn't there.
I'll vote to accept.
Okay.
That's written.
Okay Rochelle, um, are you, you were there for the deliberative session and the third, right?
Yeah.
And so would you approve those and abstain on the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And making this really difficult for Katie. I'll give you notes afterwards.
As a point of clarification, the deliberative session does not need board approval.
Okay, good. Oh, right, it says no board action. Thank you. Okay, good. Just the school board meetings. Good. All right, so communications, none? Right? Do we have any communications? You do.
I, I did not receive any, but, um, you know, just as a, a process piece, any, um, board communications you receive, um, with your, you know, please use your SAU 24 email, um, that is the email that is up on the website. Um, and, and there's lots of reasons, that's a good practice. But all of those, uh, when you get a communication in your role as board member, um, those should be included. And, and we can put those in the minutes. And so you could send them to Katie Seer, um, or you can send them to me and I'll make sure they get to Katie.
Great. Anyone else have communications? All right, so we have a couple groups that are going to come speak for the board. One that I'm super, super excited about is the mikvah challenge speeches. So we had our middle school, well, and I'm guessing, do we have our teacher here?
Holly is here.
Is here, okay, I'm going to let Holly do this, um, but I, I was a judge and I was blown away about the incredible, speech writers and presenters that we have in the middle school. You should be very proud. So go ahead Holly.
Unmute. Hi there. Um, let's see if I can start my video and not be glitchy. Um, hi everybody, uh, I tell you what an exciting, um, the challenge that we participated in this year was really, was bringing our administrators to thank for getting us involved in. But the mikvah challenge is, um, essentially, um, something, an organization that was brought forth by mikvah who had been a senator, um, and he died in 2016. And he put together this organization to get youth more involved in civics. And if you think about it like a spider web, um, one of the projects that he has is this, or he initiated was the soapbox speech. And so our administrators went and got involved in this. Um, uh, last year, we were one of six schools in the state. And, um, so, uh, I'm going to ask, bringing in a classroom rate success, all 114 seventh graders participated and we had 21 go to the state, um, soapbox. Or what do they call that? Um, um, I'm forgetting the, um, uh, like the, the premier of the best of the best. And from that, that's, um, we, they to nationals where they will, uh, show them off at the, um, in Chicago, well, it will be in Zoom. Um, but, uh, and we had, um, six kids out of those 12. So it really, and two of them are here tonight. Oh, uh, Tyler Andrews, is Tyler here? I didn't see him on the list. Anyway, um, if, if Savannah would like to give her speech, is now the right time?
Yes, please.
Um, my name's, can you guys hear me?
Okay.
Yes.
My name's Savannah Chapman and I'd like to, uh, give my speech about how we respond back to gossip. Gossip changes the way we look each other, the way we feel about each other, and how we talk to each other. Gossip is hurting people and we don't even care. We just want to be accepted and know the dirty secrets crawling on our bodies. It just so happens that us humans like gossiping and it makes it hard to avoid the secrets we so badly want to hear. Think about it. Have you ever not accepted a secret? We always believe what we are told and not the truth. That's what makes gossip so dangerous. But what makes gossiping more dangerous is that we go along with the lies even when we know that it is the wrong thing to do. Imagine what would happen if what all I just described changed, if we stopped filling our minds with the rumors we hear. I tested gossip once and I didn't even know it. And now I'm going to tell the story about how it took control over a person I knew. The story started out with me and two friends. Let's call them friend number one and friend number two. I set a plan outside with friend number one and friend number two so that they would go off together. I had friend number one say bad things about me on purpose. And then I was going to have her report back to me and tell me what she said. I had friend number one say things like Savannah's a jerk and she's so rude. And when friend number two had heard what friend number one had to say, I could tell from a distance that friend number two was uncomfortable. But when friend number one came to report, I was surprised by what she said. She said that friend number two agreed with her. This shows all of us how gossip starts and the traps it sets. People go along with the lies just to fit in and to be accepted. Because of this trap, I am no longer friends with friend number two. Because I really thought she was agreeing with friend number one, but really she was just trying to be accepted. I was too young to understand what was happening, but now looking back, I know what happened. And if I was in the same situation, I would have done the same exact thing. This really tells us that gossip has a huge effect on how people respond back to it. The different ways it can affect people and the harm it gives. Before you spread gossip, think about how it can affect people first.
Great job Savannah.
Thank you.
Now Holly, did Tyler show up?
I don't know. His mom had said that they were planning on it. Um, but.
That's okay. You know what? He can come next time too. Savannah, that was. Thank you so much. And thank you for all that you've done. Any questions or comments from the board?
It was very interesting. I just, I wanted to highlight in, in, um, the judges or the people who gave feedback included, um, Mrs. Sununu, uh, Justice Broderick, uh, Dan Feltes. Um, and, and so, you know, some interesting people were involved and took their time out and listened to all these speeches. And it really was a, a great way to, um, give, give a soapbox and, uh, to young people to see and, and then to listen to what they had. And they really did listen to what they had to say. I was impressed by that.
I'd like to commend Savannah. That's a risky topic that you took. And the reflection at the end was very, um, very strong. Um, that's, I think, how you looked back at how you would have acted now or back then, um, is a big takeaway for me. So thank you for including that part.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you guys. Um, all right. So the other person that may be here is anyone here from the PTO? Okay, um, all right. So the next section is committee reports. And typically, everyone on the board, has a role on one or more committees. And per the training that we just had, you're not voting or doing anything in those meetings. What you're doing is collecting information, bringing it back to the board. And then the board will vote if we have motions or anything we have to do based on that stuff. So because this is a new board, we will, um, sort of dole out the, the committee assignments. So, um, I, I have some suggestions. And then if you have one, we can have one or two people on each board. And then we'll make sure that we're all good and then we'll vote, or no, we don't have to vote. It's just committee placements. Um, so the first one's curriculum. And I'm wondering if Sarah, who is a teacher, would be willing to be one of our people?
Yes, I would be interested in curriculum.
Okay, great. I would like to stay with community relations and policy, which I've done for a while now. Next one is facilities. And I think that was Rochelle's. Are you still interested in that Rochelle?
Um, the one that I'd like to do the most is curriculum. So if I can be the second on curriculum.
Yeah, you could secondly be the second on that one. So, so.
Facility.
And also facilities? Okay. I think that's, that's good. Um, so wellness and safety. Typically, we have two board members, one that does the middle, uh, upper L in the middle school and one that does Center Woods because those are two different committees. I believe in the past, that was Kristen, Christina Rochelle? Or no, was it Heidi?
I did both of them.
You did both of them. Okay. Do you want to still do both of them?
Um, I can. Um, it's been pretty easy this year because there's Zoom. I don't know, um, how many I'd be able to attend because it's 7:45 and 1:55 if they go back to in-person.
But I know when I did wellness, you don't actually have to go. They'll send you notes too. So.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that.
I, I don't mind doing that.
Okay, great.
I have notes to report out on for this month.
Okay, good. We're going to do that once we get through this. Next one is transportation. I was wondering if, um, I was thinking that might be a good one for you, Daniel, to sort of get started in, if you'd be interested. If, and you, you're welcome to ask me what that means. I know I'm throwing things at you.
Oh, no, that's fine. Um, what does transportation encompass?
Sure. So basically, um, it involves, um, requests from the public if they say, could we have a new school, a, a new stop? Or, or there's an, there's an issue with transportation. It's pretty small. I think Chris, you can talk to what that was like last year.
Last year I was on the, the.
No, I was, I'm sorry, I was talking about Chris Roy.
Oh, I know. I just wanted to add that last night, or last year I was on the transportation and I, I never heard from anybody. I didn't even know who did it.
So that's good. We were pretty smooth.
Yeah, to that point, I, I, I also have it and I wasn't here last year for it, so.
Okay, so pretty much, um, it was one of the things that your predecessor would do the negotiating with the transportation commit, the transportation company. And then if there were issues or concerns that came from the public, then, then you would work with whoever, a member on the board for those concerns. I think probably last year was an unusual year because, for a lot of reasons, transportation was kind of weird. Go ahead.
One interesting thing that has been on the board, um, agenda for a future agenda item that got sidetracked because of COVID, um, is a transportation study. And so, you know, before COVID, there, there was a call to look at some of the bus stops. And so it is possible, um, that that, once we get back on our feet and, and, and start operating as normal, um, that we should dedicate some time to do a transportation bus stop study. Um, but it is an ad hoc, you as needed committee. It's not, some of these are monthly and we can tell you now when all the meetings would be, this is when issues come up.
Yeah, okay. And Rochelle, I know you were on this last year. Do you want to try again and see if we get connections or, or will those, um, curriculum and facilities keep you busy?
Um, I don't care to be on transportation again.
Okay, great. Daniel, um, if you need a backup person, we can get you a backup person.
No problem.
It's good to, good to have one primary.
If it gets too busy, I will totally help you.
Great.
Yeah, thanks.
So the last two committees, um, negotiations this year is going to be tough. We're going to have a teacher's contract and we're going to have a para contract. So we're going to need two school board reps for the para and two for the, the teachers. What I'd like to do though is wait for, to figure out who's going to do what because we're already throwing so much at you and we don't really need this one until maybe May. So maybe in the next meeting, we'll talk about how we want to break that up. But that's a big one. That's a huge commitment. The, the, the negotiations is meetings with our, um, with the, the union reps for each one of those. There's several conversations where we work through the contract. So when we get to the fall, those are going to be pretty time consuming, just heads up. The other one that I don't want to do quite right now, if that's okay, is the kindergarten because we're going to talk about what we want to do with kindergarten in new business. And based on what we decide, then you'll know what you're sort of signing up for. So I just want to hold that one till late in the meeting, if that's okay.
Did I miss who's on policy committee?
Oh, that's me.
Oh.
You, um, I, yeah, sorry, I, I jumped through. I said policy and community relations. I've done those in the past. Um, and they kind of go with the, the CHRO. You, they're public meetings though. I can let you know when they are if you want to come. They're usually during the day, but absolutely. Is there anyone who, um, I, I didn't list on something that you want to be a part of? So we can get you put on a mailing list. Very good. Okay. So to Christine's point, typically this is a point in the meeting where we report back on something. So Sarah, I'm not going to ask you to report on the curriculum committee because you just did that. You just joined. Um, Jackie, I think you're, you're about to have a curriculum meeting? No?
Um, Natasha could probably, I don't, I don't care when there.
So our, we just had a curriculum meeting. Um, it was not well attended because we were in this transition between boards. So we basically tabled the agenda to next month.
Okay, great. And, and you can get Sarah added to your list of, okay, great. Thank you. Um, community relationship, uh, relations was basically about getting the message out about budget, which, great job, that passed. Um, there's, right now, we've been talking about how we communicate the John Stark budget because, so for most of these committees, they're, they're the whole SAU. So I am going, even though our budget's done, but I'm going to, to work with Henniker and, and, uh, and Stark about, uh, their future work. Other than that, not much policy. We have policies later in this meeting and I will go super, super slow because there's a lot of like nuanced pieces there. And some of these policies, Jackie's going to remind me because we, some of these policies we worked on in October, but we tabled all of the policies during the budget season because budget takes over the world. Um, facilities, I don't know. Do you have anything on that Rochelle?
Um, we postponed the meeting until after, right? Or did I miss it?
No, no, we, uh, similar to what Natasha said, I, I postponed it because I saw we were in a little bit of a transition. So we'll be meeting Thursday at four. But I can tell you what we're looking to do with that meeting is, is discuss CIP's, CIP, uh, capital improvement plan, uh, items specifically for Center Woods. So we're going to do a little work around that.
Great. Oh, but that's a great point that Chris was smart. He said CIP and then he told you what it was. So for those who are new on the board, we tend to talk in a lot of, um, shortcuts. And so I'm going to try to remember to at least explain it once, but if not, please, just, you don't even raise your hand, just unmute and say, what are you talking about? And we'll slow down and, and explain it. Um, okay, so wellness, Christine.
Um, Center Woods met on March 12th. I was unable to make it. I was planning on it, but then my kids came into my classroom and changed my mind on that. Um, they're talking about, they've been doing monthly, um, challenges. They're doing a bulletin board. The big talk was about field day and how they're going to be structuring it and organizing it. Um, as of right now, grade levels will each have a field day and they'll be with their cohorts and have a certain chunk of time to go out. They had talked about earlier, and I believe they did get all of the equipment that they had needed, or at least most of it for field day. So the kids are using it during recess time now also. So it's kind of, um, double. And, um, I believe that's it right now. Um, the other part was just the travel guidance, but, um, Dr. Coe already talked about that. And then for, um, where middle school, they just met last Friday. I, I attended that. The big talk was the 5K. And it looks like it's going on as planned, as it has in the past, other than last year. Um, they do feel there could be plenty of room for social distancing. They're, um, encouraging the community. They would like to invite the board. It can be a walk or a run. I probably will be walking so that I can make it through the whole time. Um, it'll be four o'clock on May 21st and they'll be putting out registrations. Um, I would presume to anyone who, from the board who doesn't want to participate physically, could be there volunteering. There's, I know, having gone there with my daughter once before, there's a lot of hands on deck. They're looking at creating a T-shirt, um, design. They're going to be looking for the kids to create a T-shirt design. And they're also talking about field day, probably not the last full week of school, but the week before that. And having a lot of typical kinds of activities, it looks like.
Great. Great. Okay, so that's committee reports for now. Administration reports, principal, uh, let's go with Sean.
Hello, it's really as written and reported and presented unless you have any questions for me, board?
I just have a comment. I was really excited to see all the, the, the spring activities that you're talking about. With the report, with the, um, field trips and the, um, dances. And so I think, I think that's great that that's part of the conversation.
And we are looking at ways to continue any PPE requirements. So we're being very creative in our planning. The day law, extended day field trip for our eighth graders would mostly be outdoor types activities. Looking at a potential of doing the, um, promotion dance under a tent. Again, so that we can offer these, but continue to honor any PPE requirements. So we, we know our kids are all so healthy and safe, but having fun.
I have a comment, but it's for both you and Jess. So I guess I could do it now. Thank you. I understand that through very short notice, y'all organized and got our, a big chunk of our teachers vaccinated on a Sunday, which was not our choice in Stiplegate, which was, wasn't necessarily our choice with Johnson &amp; Johnson, which wasn't necessarily our choice. But you made it happen. And as a result, you know, we can talk about when we're going to come back, which is huge. I do know it was, um, late Monday morning, early Monday morning, uh, when we realized that there was a lot of people having a reaction, y'all scrambled and, you know, the alternative was to call school out right before school started when people were already getting the kids ready. And, and you managed to make school happen. And that meant, you know, I know Jess was teaching. Um, I know lots of people that weren't usually subs or subs and you made it happen. And I'm, I'm just so proud of you guys. So thank you.
I'll second that.
With that said, Jess, you want to give us your report?
Sure. My report looks.
Sure. My report looks very different than how I usually submit reports. I wanted to talk a little bit about our teachers' greatest accomplishments. So our professional development in our monthly faculty meetings has been focused on universal design for learning, what we call UDL. And what UDL is, is it's basically a framework or a guide that optimizes teaching and learning, and it's based on research and how students learn. Essentially, it's basically a way of planning and teaching where educators can provide multiple means of engagement, representation, action and expression. And it builds expert learners because students are engaged and empowered in their lessons. So at our faculty meetings, we've been focusing on one aspect, um, which is student choice. All of our faculty meetings have modeled that concept. And at our February faculty meeting, we had educators choose whether they wanted to read an article, watch a YouTube video, listen to a podcast, whatever. All on the topic of teacher reflection. They learned from a variety of resources, the impact of reflection has on teaching and learning. So then the teachers chose how they would reflect on that. And so they had a menu of choices. And those were if they wanted to talk to a colleague, review a plan book lessons, look at student work, whatever they wanted to do to engage in reflection in an effort to identify one of their own greatest accomplishments of this year. So then the teachers had the option of how they would present their greatest achievement. So essentially they could do it any way they wanted, as long as it could be shared with you. And so some chose to write a poem. They did, a teacher wrote a video, not wrote, did a video. Many chose to write a paragraph, some took pictures. And so all of their greatest accomplishments are included in my board report. And in this meeting, the educators, in this last meeting in February, the educators had a multiple, multiple choices of all, all that would meet the same goal. And that was to learn why reflection is important, reflect on their practices and then share their greatest accomplishments with you. Our goal was met by all staff, but more importantly, how they got there was based on how they wanted to, what path they wanted to take. So they presented their knowledge in multiple ways, which is empowering them to have choice in their learning and in their representation, which is exactly what we want for our students. So not only was this exercise about reflection and UDL best practices and about student choice, it was also an opportunity to communicate a message with the board and the community. Educators have been under a microscope for many decisions that have been out of their control. So it's important we flip that script and share what they have control over. And that is providing so many opportunities for students. I know that what I'm sharing is over 15 pages, but it is really worthy of a full read. And so that's my board report today.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Jess?
I have a comment. I read through those and I was in awe, first of all, that to have the time for everybody to take that time to reflect. But I noticed three common threads was that this year was new, even for people who had 29 years experience. It was challenging, but the way it was written about as being challenging was not in a negative. It was in pushing themselves to try something new. And also the sense of community that you have created at Center Woods Elementary and that all the staff has. You know, I know that Jackie's mentioned, I think she's used the analogy of a plane, kind of flying the plane and building it as you go. And it's a lot easier when you have so many people holding the different parts and putting them in at the same time. And I think the success of our kids is because of the amazing community you have. So thank you for sharing all of those thoughts. But also thank you so much for the work.
Yeah, I would definitely second that. Having someone who works in the building, um, it's it's amazing, not only what we see at the scoreboard level, but what I hear at the end of the day, people are so supportive and it's just, it's just a great school. So great team. Anyone else have comments for Jess?
I think it's great to hear about your modeling, what you're expecting them to do. Cause I think a lot of times it's easy to to just suggest these ideas from the top down, but to to actually model it and have the teachers experience what they're going to have their students experiences invaluable. Thank you.
Okay, superintendent report.
Um, you, I want to echo the kudos for yesterday. Yesterday was a really tough day. We were, I was unprepared. I got the Johnson and Johnson vaccine on Sunday. And I'm, I'm not usually sick and I was dragging and you know, it just kept coming and coming. So I can vouch for the impact. And and so, but people just banded together and made yesterday work because it shouldn't have. And and so we weren't willing to make a, a 6:30, 7 o'clock call. And so that's why we, I made the decision last night to shift to remote for today, um, because we were still worried about a bunch of people and didn't want to have that stress for everyone in the morning. And and so, uh, understanding it was frustrating and hard for everyone, but I think less so than it would have been if we'd made the call in the morning. Um, the two things from, well, one thing from my board report that I want to highlight, um, you know, I gave an update on some of the bills that are making its way, their way through the legislature that impact education. And two that I think from a fiscal perspective that it's worth paying attention to is SB 130. And that's a, it's a voucher program. And regardless of the politics with that, there's a fiscal implication that I if I'm looking at it through the lens of where school district, I'm concerned about the fiscal implication of that bill. And then the other one is SB 135, which has a positive, if it passes, it would have a positive impact on our budget. Because what it would do is is allow us to use last year's enrollment numbers for our adequacy funding. And that would have a positive impact on our tax rate in where. So Al, entertain questions.
So just to echo what you said, um, two things. So vouchers, I was trying to explain that to my daughter today, right? So the the idea that we have X amount of money and any parent could take their kid to whatever place. It's kind of like, if my daughter doesn't want to eat my dinner, I'm not going to give her a third of what I spend in the household. So she can go someplace else to eat, right? So there's a, there's an overhead cost of of electricity, keeping the lights on that is independent from an individual basis. So again, regardless of politics, this isn't a political board, just be aware that if we, if we say took 10% of the people and we gave them vouchers to go somewhere else, we need to make up that income to keep the lights on. So there will be a fiscal, a piece to that. The other one that you you mentioned, uh, so because we had a lot of people withdraw from school during COVID and just homeschool, we have a lot less of the adequacy numbers, right? And that, uh, the the numbers that determine how much money we get for adequacy this year. The other thing is a free and reduced lunch, particularly for for you new folks, because everyone got free lunch this year. People didn't sign up for free lunch if they needed it because they were getting it anyway. And it doesn't feel good to say give me free lunch. So less people did that. So as a result, we get less adequacy money from the state. So if they use last year's numbers, which are not exactly perfect, but it would be a much higher number than what we would actually have this year. And so those are the main two reasons that we're watching those. Anybody else have any questions, comments for Jackie?
Um, I have a comment about the voucher one is I think it would be good because it holds the school more accountable and makes it want to do better so that kids want to stay.
And that's why I was trying to specify that from a fiscal perspective, this would be a difficult thing for the where school budget, regardless of how you feel about school choice and vouchers, fiscally, this would have a negative impact on the where school district budget.
Right. Because from what I understand, if there were just say two students from a classroom that decided to use the voucher program, the district would lose funding for those two students, but that would not be enough to say decrease the cost of we wouldn't, we would still need to employ the same number of teachers. So we would still need to, as Wendy said, have the lights on the same amount. We would still need to have the same resources. So we would just strictly be losing that funding from those couple of students and be required then to do the same amount of work with less, making us less competitive with those other options. Is from what, if I'm understanding that correctly, fiscally?
Okay. Any other questions for Jackie? Okay, uh, are we doing Natasha? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Are you a school board member? I'm sorry.
I got a, yeah, I'm a school board member.
You are?
Yes, Chris Nixon.
You're not our school board member, are you?
Yeah, I am. I've been a member for about two years.
I'm sorry, were you elected? I'm sorry. I'm just.
Sorry, could you say that again, please?
So to be a school board member, you were elected by the town of Ware? I don't think you were. I don't recognize the name.
Oh, uh, I'm sorry. I misheard you. Uh, no, no. I am not of the, uh, not of, uh, Ware. My, my son goes to Ware.
Okay. So in public comment, you can certainly speak up. That's coming up in about a half hour or so.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right. So does Natasha have a report that she wants to talk to? No. I don't think so. All right. So then we are up to the manifest. So that's Chris, right?
All right. So the manifests, those are, um, those will be circulating through the digital signature platform that we will be using. So that that will kind of revolve around the conversation that we have in new business. So yeah, so that that conversation will happen later on. Report of appropriations, the MS 22, I believe that might already be circulating where we're going to release it after this meeting. So that is, what that is, is we're reporting to the DRA what our approved appropriations are after the vote in this, in this month. Uh, and it's, so it's broken down by the appropriations, the appropriations that were elementary level, the appropriations that are middle school level. And then obviously this is not a board, uh, a school board that has high school level expenses. And so what you'll find in your board drive, what you'll find in your board drive is a breakdown of exactly what the budget looks like in our system, our accounting system. And so that way you can cross reference that to the MS 2 that you, 22 that you'll receive. I can take a pause there to ask for any questions before I move on to the reconciliations.
Yeah, um, how, how?
I'm sorry.
How, how big is your penis?
Thank you.
I am unable to.
I removed him.
Thank you, Natasha.
Not quick enough, but I removed him.
All right.
I would like to repeat that, that question. What, how big is the penis?
Awesome. Wow, we made it a whole year without that.
Unfortunately, the remedy to it is, you know, doing something like they do with the town. It's a much more tightened. I don't know. We'll have to talk about that.
It did happen during our facilities meeting.
I heard.
And I got banned from there on accident.
I'm the lucky one that got to respond to both of those. So um, so just one more clarification. Any questions on the MS 22 before we move forward?
From board members?
All right. And then, all right. So now that moves on to the reconciliation report. So the reconciliation report, uh, basically we are going through what our revenue looks like today and our expenditures today. And just basically it's a picture in time. So this, this report, I believe, goes through the February bank statement. Uh, so you'll see any activity through February. And so some of the items that we have kind of spotlighted this month is, so we, I, I've touched base on it a few of our meetings so far this year, but the health, health trust returned a surplus to the school board. A portion of that went back to the individuals that paid for their health insurance, the employees.
Chris, just, just a quick interjection. So Daniel and Sarah, do you know where to find this on the, in the drive? So there's a, there's a drive that will have March meetings. So the, the a piece of paper that he's talking to, the reconciliation report says, uh, says 9E for me. So if you open that, you'll see sort of the lines that he's stepping through. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Sarah, did you have a question? I saw you.
Um, it's in my to do list to email Greg about getting password and information for my, so I can access the drive.
Okay. Sarah, it might be in the binder I gave you yesterday. Maybe.
I, I looked back.
Okay, it might not be. We were working on it and it might not have been ready.
Okay.
Sarah, did you get an email? For the, the essay you emailed?
I, I did not get an email with a password. I have my email address.
So Greg is on here and he'll catch up with you after this.
Perfect.
Um, okay. So, yeah, so the health trust surplus, the total amount that was returned was about $83,604. Uh, and then of that, $12,459,000 went back to employees because that was the percentage of that surplus that they paid themselves. So in our revenue, we have $71,145 of actual revenue that will be a bottom line on the revenue side. Um, so like I said, we talked about that a little earlier in the year, um, when we talked about unanticipated revenues that had come in. So that will be on the bottom line of the revenues. When we look at the expenditure side, we are, we're not running any kind of deficits right now. So that's really positive. And then our bottom line is 618,672. And just as a comparison point, last year at the same time, uh, and at this point, we're still prior to COVID changing everything, we were at a three, we were at three point, or sorry, 2.96% of our budget on the bottom line. Currently, we have 3.8 point, 3.84% of our budget on the bottom line. And so that is the reconciliation for this month.
We have questions for Chris about reconciliation.
All right. So under personnel, we have staff nominations that we're doing on public. Right? And then we have two resignations.
Yes. Um, do you have Alex Crocker's? I'm sorry, Alex Duhamels and Morgan Ziffchek. And that letter is also in the drive for a letter.
So just a, for those not familiar with the, this life cycle of the school. So we tend to get resignations in March because the contract renewal piece happens in April. Right? So this is the time of year where teachers are deciding if they're staying or not. in March because the contract renewal piece happens in April, right? So this is the time of year where teachers are deciding if they're staying or not. Just.
So Morgan's, you know, a fourth grade teacher and this was her first year, um, and we, you know, we'll miss Morgan. She's moving back to Vermont.
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the resignations?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rochelle. Do I have a second?
I'll second Christine.
Christine second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, so roll call vote to accept with regrets the resignations. Uh, Rochelle?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Daniel? Sarah?
Yes.
And Wendy, yes. Okay. Policies. All right, so I'm gonna go a little slow because there's a lot that happens in policies. As you heard from the training, there's a ton of policies that are, that are federally and state mandated. Um, sometimes those policies come in and they replace existing ones. Sometimes they come in and um, are brand new. We get, uh, sample policies from NHSBA, and then we work through the policy committee, which has representation from each of the boards in the SAU. Um, and then we come up with, um, what we've pretty much what looks reasonable. The good thing about our policy committee is we have a lawyer on there, so we're able to do a, um, some lawyer proofing before it comes here. But all I'm doing is presenting it to the board. Y'all can, you know, accept it. You can tell me to go back and make more changes. Typically, we'd, you would have reviewed this in your packet. Um, I talked to them, which I'll do in a second. And then we'd vote to, to approve the changes. Because we have two brand new people though, the other option is we do a first reading, where we read it as a group. And then we do a second reading and we vote on it in the following month. So what I'm recommending tonight is that we just do the first rating so that you have an opportunity to sort of get familiar with the process, read it offline and, um, think about any questions or concerns, right? So, so that's my suggestion. Um, so the first policy we want to talk about adopting is called ADC, prohibitions regarding use in and possession. This is a state mandated required policy, right, Jackie? That, so typically what happens is we'll have, there'll be a some legislative action at the state level. And they'll come down and say, you need to have this within a month, or you need to have. And so this one came down, I don't think we had a deadline. But, um, basically what it does is it replaces two policies we had before, uh, GBED and JICG. And it basically defines the, the same things that you would always say that we don't want drugs and alcohol in our school, but they've modernized it to talk about e-cigarettes, e-liquid, liquid, liquid nicotine and so on. Okay, so that will be the first one that will, we can read through now or or offline. But basically, it's, no student can purchase, attempt to purchase or possess any tobacco product. Uh, no employee will use tobacco product devices, e-cigarette liquids or nicotine on a facility. Um, just so you know, we've already been at tobacco-free schools, so this is a new change or requirement to teachers. It's just modernizing the language. And then no visitor contractor vendor or other member of public can use tobacco on our property. And then the superintendent will have rules and procedures to make that happen. That is ADC. Don't think I need a motion because we're just doing a first read. The second one, DAF, is also a mandated policy, right? Jackie, remind me? Yes?
Federally mandated.
Federally mandated, thank you.
For us to receive the, you know, use the grants.
Right, so if we want money from the feds, we need this policy. And so it's a it basically talks to, um, the provisions for getting awards from the budget, um, allowableability, cash management, procurement, conflict of interest, travel reimbursement. Um, I will point out at the end of this one, all of our policies, you'll see legal references. And so there's a lot of legal references in the CFR. The regulations that sort of pertain to this. So that will be the second new one I'd like to adopt, um, next month. The other thing that we, we tend to do is we adopt our policies, right? So we have a lot of policies. We have a ton of policies. I know Daniel said he's read most of them. But they get stale, so we try to go through iteratively and look at all our policies and make sure that they are up to date. So the two that will be, I'll be asking to re-adopt next month are ACE, which is non-discrimination on the basis of handicap or disability. The original policy is very terse. It says, don't discriminate. And then, um, one of the concerns that came up was the grievance procedure, which is what the parents have to do if they feel like there, there's an issue, is in our policy, not in our I mean, sorry, it's in our procedures, not in our policies, but the policies are public facing, so I think we decided to put the procedure in here to help parents know what they need to do if there's. Yes. So that was, that's the big change. That's why you see it go from one paragraph to like a page and a half. That's what we're doing there. The other we adopt is EB. It's called, it was called Joint Loss Management Committee, and it's being changed to Environmental and Safety Program, and.
Opposite.
Opposite.
For both of them. And so the updated, we, we took the procedures out and they'll be in.
Put it in the procedure, sorry.
And it's the Joint Loss, um, Committee. Um, is the policy.
That's right. Thank you. This is what happens when we do it in October.
It's hard.
Like six months later. You're right. So, right, so we had the, that's absolutely right. We had the procedures in the policies and we tried to split the two. Thank you. I was totally misspeaking. Um, and then the final, uh, motion that I'll make for next month is we wanted to delete the policies, GBED and JICG, because now they are covered by ADC. Is that accurate, Jackie?
Yes.
We're there. Okay, all right, so that's, you know, you have, in the drive, you have the new one. On the website, you have the old one. It can sort of compare and contrast and we can, we, we can look to adopt these next month. Old business. We have the budget spending and grants for twenty twenty twenty-four.
Chris is gonna just give an update of, we've been sharing with you, um, how we're spending the ESER grants, the COVID money that's coming in. Um, and, and I, I think it was last month, shared, you know, where we stood, where we were anticipating spending, um, some of those funds. Uh, and, and so next month we'll come back with a full report, but this month, Chris just has an update.
Yeah, so the update is, so since that report, we received our allocations for SR two. Uh, and so that actually got loaded into the grants management system last week, and we got a lot of paperwork in regards to that grant. Um, and so our, our final allocation on SR two is, in Ware is three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. And so that, that funding is avail, available to us through September twenty twenty-three.
And just for, um, education of the, the newbies, did you say what that was for and what the limitations are?
So, uh, the, the limitations mim- mimic cares to a certain degree, the SR one that we had received in this past fall and, and, or excuse me, in this past spring. And basically, what we're charged to do when we think of expenditures for that grant is to determine how it responds to and how it lessens the effect of COVID nineteen. Uh, we had a conversation with state, uh, state guidance this afternoon, saying we discussed all, everything and, and, you know, what we could and could not use these funds for. Um, and so we'll continue to think around what would best benefit uh, the community in Ware.
Great, thank you.
And I believe we'll also be scheduling a public hearing, um, to, now that we have the funds, um, we'll schedule a public hearing so we're able to use them.
Great. Good. Okay, any more old business? No, I don't think so. So, new, new business, uh, the draft of the school calendar.
So this is your, your first look at our, the calendar. This will come back for a vote next month. Um, it's also gone, uh, to WEA, uh, for their input, um, the, the Ware Education Association. And, um, so there it is. It's our draft and we'll come back to it next, next month.
And we still follow basically the Concord calendar, right?
It's quite a trick, right? Aligning, um, we want uh, the three districts, uh, within the SAU to be aligned. We try to also, um, bring in Stoddard somewhat, but they more follow the Keen calendar. And then because our high school students go to CRTC, the Concord Regional Tech- Technical School, um, in Concord, we want to maximize their ability to participate there, and, and so we want to follow that calendar. So there's a, there's a lot of coordination, uh, that goes into, uh, putting this forward. And each contract has some different nuances about what can and can't be done with teacher workdays and, and, and so.
And days off before Christmas. There's a lot of things that go into this, so, um, definitely take a look, have some questions. Just know that some of these things are sort of set in stone.
And also that February vacation that happens every certain cycle of years is quirky this, for next year. It actually goes more into March. And that's
All right.
It happens like every five or six years that it falls on that weird time. But it's pretty consistent among the other schools in New Hampshire.
That was the recommended date for vacation from the state. We also get a recommended calendar. Um, there's some attempt to align, so we're off vacation. Uh, we don't want to have the same vacation as Massachusetts.
Right. Good. Okay, I think the next topic is the one that everyone's super excited about. Looking into how we plan to go back to full return to the middle school. Yes.
This was a tested item on the.
Yeah, so I think, Christine, did you want to talk to this?
Um, I, I'm interested in investigating this because of a couple of things. We're lucky enough now that the teachers were able to have the opportunity last weekend, I believe this weekend, if I'm correct, to be able to get vaccinated if they wanted to, and they're able to. Um, so that gives them that, um, more, a little bit more confidence. Also, I, I'm, I want to make sure that the kids get their rigor back. Um, having only two days a week, um, in the classroom, I think it would be really good to get their rigor back, get them back in with their friends so that we can establish what the school year will hopefully look like in the fall, so that we will end the school year with less trepidation than we had last year. Um, this summer was full of a lot of stress for a lot of people because we didn't, none of us knew what it was, what it could look like, let alone what it was going to look like. Um, so my hope is that we can try to fine tune now so that the fall would be smoother.
Right, and, and with that, I, I agree, right? I have a daughter who should be in school more. Um, but I also understand that there's a ton of moving parts around this. We've got contracts with the unions, we've got um, transportation, we've got all those other things, so, um, so we can't just tonight say, just make it so, right? So I think what, what we could do is probably make a motion to, and, and ask Jackie to, um, come up with a plan or enact the plan or.
How does Jackie feel about going back to school?
Um, there, there are a lot of moving parts. So I did start, I knew this was coming and I started to, um, it's also what the John Stark Board charged us with is looking at, um, what it would take. You know, the fact that vaccinations have begun, um, I think everyone's feeling a lot better. Um, our students, however, are not vaccinated, um, and, and so we made some decisions going into this year because we had to. Uh, we reallocated some teachers to um, learn at home, so we're gonna have to look at our staffing situation, um, the distancing, I, I I don't know if we can ensure three feet of distance. Um, we're gonna have to look at lunchrooms. The recommendation is six feet. I don't know that we'll be able to do that with everyone in the building. And so what I would present as a plan is, this is what it would look like. Or if there are a couple places where we have choice, um, I, I mean, I can't wait to have the kids back. I, all of the, no one, we all want the kids back, um. They'll, uh, we do have a staggered arrival at WMS right now. Um, so it will, it may change the, the schedule a bit. Um, we're gonna have to figure out what the learn-at-home families want to do, because that'll make an impact about how many kids. Right now, we're splitting our resources a, a bit. Um, we also, we have an agreement, and so the negotiation committee is going to have to um, get revived to talk about the MOA, uh, the memorandum of agreement with WBA. Because it's a change in working conditions, um, so we'll have that conversation. Um, starting a conversation with transportation about what that looks like on the buses. And they're currently, I, I know, um, we've had a, a few tight days uh, where the, the folks in the office are driving buses, um, the, the transportation office. Um, I know they're worried about staffing. Um, we are, a survey's going out either tomorrow or Thursday to we, we did a survey last spring, um, to see how things were going and, and what the, what preferences are, what families have for preferences. So it is exciting to be able to have this conversation. Um, and, and I'm, I am excited about that. There's a lot of moving parts.
Okay, so one of the things you said, and that's right, we're gonna have to revisit our MOA, which is a memorandum of understanding with the teachers, um, was, which was something we needed to do to, you know, make them feel that they could come back and teach, right? So we'll have to revise that, which means we need the negotiation committee back for the teachers, at least for now. Um, I was on that and I, I would be glad to continue to be on that. I'll need someone else from the board to join me.
I'd like to also be on it.
That's Sarah?
No, it's Rochelle.
Rochelle. Okay, great. Okay, so Rochelle and I will, will.
I'd also like to be on it. Is it possible to have more than two or?
Um, the problem, I think, uh, I have to ask the lawyer. I know that when we get to majority, then it becomes a public meeting. Does that override when we do negotiations?
Negotiations are a different.
Okay.
Operate under a different, um. So this would be, you're talking about this specifically for the.
Specifically for the MOA, yeah. How about this?
There are three people who would be available and we can, um, figure out when we talk to, um, WBA about, um, what works.
That would be great. And the only reason that I'm like putting my, my hand in is I negotiated the first MOA, so I just figured for consistency sake, let's just keep that going to get through this year. But, you know, if you two want to negotiate the next teacher contract, have, have fun. Um, okay, good. Um, any other questions about logistics? Do you need a motion that we charge you with that?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I have a motion to charge Jackie with? Christine's already got her hand up.
I'd like to put more on your plate, Jackie. I'd like to make a motion, um, to charge you with looking into returning, um, grade six through eight before the end of the school year.
Okay. And, and so you're looking for me to bring a plan back?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to, if you could have a conversation, um, with Sean and with the administrators and see what it will take to get them back.
And then proposed. And then proposed during the April board meeting?
During, yeah, if we could, would it be possible to propose it, uh, at a meeting?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great, Rochelle. Do we have any more conversation? Okay, so roll call vote to charge Jackie to come up with a plan to come back to school for those middle school kids, um, Christine?
Uh, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
And Wendy, yes. Great. That's exciting. It's hard to believe it's been a year, and, and it's also hard to believe it's been only a year, but, um, okay, so. All-day kindergarten. So just for the new folks, we had a, a very active committee over the last couple of years that looked into what it would take for all-day kindergarten. There, um, there was a couple legislative things that happened last year. One is we'd have, we're now mandated to bus kindergarten kids. And so we had to add an extra run in the middle of the day. Uh, and because Ware is so spread out, um, you can't just have one bus to drop all these kiddos off. We ended up having multiple small buses, so it was very costly. So, fiscally and in the kindergarten committee can come back and, and give those details. It's a slim margin of money to get to all-day kindergarten. That said, the, the big piece that we're we, the reason we put it off for a year is we have to have a formal plan and we had Heidi's here, we had really great detailed options, but we didn't center on one and focus on one, so that our, our hope was that if we choose to move forward with this, someone is going to take the plan. Do we put the, the preschool at John Stark? Do we um, move some people to the middle school? Have a single plan with great details and, um, a budget so that we can then present that to, um, the voters. But tonight, I guess the question is do we want to knowing that this is a goal in our 202021 plan, um, do we want to, um, have a committee to look into, uh, the strategy to bring full-day kindergarten to voters?
Do we have to bring a motion or vote on that? Sorry.
Probably need to have a motion so that we can have a discussion.
Um, I would like to bring a motion to have a full-day converting committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second Christine.
Okay, Christine. Okay, now we can have discussion. So people's thoughts?
I just want to, um, bring up something we mentioned last year. Was, uh, putting the preschool in the, the high school as like, um, the early childhood education. I just love that idea.
Yeah.
For moving on.
I do too. I do, I love it as a parent of a high school kid too, that you have that opportunity.
So the, you know, the, the reason we need to make this decision, or you need to make this decision now is all the steps that need to go into place and we just want to make sure um, we've got plenty of lead time, um, and that Natasha will lead, will be the S A U liaison for this, um. But we want to do it justice and, um, I, I think we'd want to have a plan ready by the end of the summer.
I agree, yep. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to form a committee to work through the logistics of all-day kindergarten. Need a roll call vote for that. So Christine?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Wendy, yes. Okay. Great.
Further, can I just ask for further?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and so in the past, it was a, a committee that had, um, community representation.
Correct.
Is, would you like us to model it under, like that again?
Yeah, so that was my next step. So I had skipped the committee member for that because I didn't know if we were actually gonna do it. So my next stage is um, somebody who wants to sort of champion that. And then I would strongly recommend, one, reaching out to Heidi because she knows how it's done. And then, and then to, um, there's, there's certainly parents that were active in this process and community members that were active that we need to sort of pull them back together. So the first step is, do we have someone who is interested in, in sharing this committee from the school board side?
I'd be happy to do it.
Great.
I'll drop the negotiations part and add the kindergarten.
Okay. Kindergarten's more fun than negotiations. Okay, great. Is there anyone else who wants to be a part of that? Or we're just, okay. Um, you, if you don't have Heidi's contact information, let me know because she knows everything. And she's sitting there smiling at me right now.
I do have a question though, like I know our committee meetings are open to the public. Are these ones also open?
Yeah, in fact, because we're gonna have committee, community, committee people, it's absolutely open. I mean, it would be anyway, right, any of our committees, but definitely we need to, you know, post it and let people be involved. Because really
I don't want to take on another committee, but I do want to just try to advocate for moving on to the high school.
Sounds good. So we'll make sure you know when the meetings are so you can.
And so there is a link, I'll, and also we'll add this one, but there's a link on our website with all the committees and each of the committees has a standing Zoom. Um, and so that, that Zoom is there and the minutes are there. It's, it, it's like a running Google Doc that just gets added to. Um, and, and so it's all right there. So I'll send that out so everyone has it, um.
Awesome. Great. All right, so I think Chris was gonna talk to us about the manifest procedures.
Yeah, so we were just gonna start off, um, so there, there's been a lot of discussion on the manifests in particular and just the level of, of information that gets, give it provided to the school board. Um, and so we're, we're really at the point where uh, we wanted to have a discussion to see how we wanted to move forward. Um, but we wanted to start with though is just making sure that everyone has an understanding of our accounts payable process. So we're just gonna do a quick slideshow of how that kind of works. So that way you have a, you know, have a little bit of a look into our process in the accounting department at the S A U. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen. First, I'm gonna actually put it up on the screen. All right, am I sharing the right thing?
You are.
Perfect. All right, so our, our accounts payable process at the S A U, um, and then therefore for the school, where a school district. Um, so in our first step, we follow the policy of D J E to ensure that we fol- that we um, follow the procurement pro- procurement pro- policy. Uh, so administrators have the authority to purchase goods and services for a value up to twenty thousand. Um, contracts is, contracts are excuse, it's, I can't speak, executed as appropriate to this policy. From there, we create a purchase order. Uh, purchase orders can happen in, in a variety of different ways. Uh, S A U accounts payable staff will create requisitions for any executed contracts. Uh, schools submit a requisition for any building level purchases. For those purchases, approvals are required by the business manager, so myself and the superintendent, so Dr. Co. And then, uh, depending on the accounting line that we're making the purchase from, additional approvals could, can be required from the principals of the buildings, the assistant superintendent, and then the director of student services. Uh, purchase orders are sent to the vendors and we receive supplies or services under our agreement. Then we receive the invoice and they are reviewed by the appropriate staff. Um, so for instance, if, if a purchase is made of items that, from the school, that invoice will travel from the school, get a, get, uh, appropriate approval from the principal, then it'll travel to the S A U and we'll go ahead and create a check from that. Um, utilities and other monthly contracted costs are paid based on approved agreements. S A U accounts payable staff will create the payment, I kinda said that already, uh, and will develop the manifest for board approval. Uh, manifests are sup- are supplied to the business manager. To be transmitted to the board. Oh, and administrative assistant to the superintendent to be transmitted to the board. So Irene at the, at the S A U office will send that through, uh, the digital signature program. Step six, this is where you all come in. You would review and sign the manifests. Uh, we had a discussion about this in our previous meeting on the, in the training. Uh, but that's, that's where the school board comes in. And until sign, step six is completed, we cannot do step seven. Step seven is we check, we mail the checks to our vendors. So that is our review of our process. And so, um, like, one, one thing that we just wanted to reiterate is, you know, our vendors, which a lot of the time might be local ware businesses, they're not gonna get our payment until we get that process moved forward. Um, so we wanted to open this discussion to the board and, and see how everyone felt about it. Um, and so that, I'll turn it back over to Wendy. Unless Jackie has anything.
No, Jack, oh, I'm looking at Jackie like. So, so typically, uh, and also we just did a, a bunch of training about, about what ours, our oversight with the manifest. We have a, an audit every year that goes through and does that single, um, line things. I believe that Chris or, and or Jackie, we're talking about making a, a folder available for school board.
We are open to whatever process. We just have to have a process that
Right.
long, um, so that we can pay what we need to pay. Um, we, we have a folder of the invoices. If you want to dig in at that level that we can, we have at the S A U, that you're welcome to come look at. Um, you know, within the week of when the manifest has to be signed, um, you, to dig into that level. The things we'd have to redact are anything that's privacy related. Um, and you, as, as Will said and Chris said, there are a number of things that we pay that are contractual and we, we've gone through that procurement process and, and so, and then also anything related to the C D A, you've approved us paying somebody a certain amount through that process. Their actual paycheck um, include, is, is private because it also, it includes information about their health benefits and health payments and that's not something um, that we're allowed to release.
Right. I think, and, um, stepping back from how I was trained, I think that the, the main thing is that the main oversight we're doing is making sure that, um, you're not spending above what the, the voters approved in any particular section, right? And that we're not um, we're not costing things against sections that they're not supposed to be in, right? So, um, so typically what I do is I go through the manifest at the very bottom. So you might not see this when you first look. You'll see a high-level manifest and then you'll see all the detailed individual items below. So go to the bottom. Um, there's a ton of information about what that is. Um, I typically will have questions. And because I'm a people person, I guess, I typically, this is the wrong person, but I go to Meredith and say, what does this mean? Probably should be Chris, who, what does this mean? And have that conversation and make sure that that it's, it sounds right. Um, if if people feel more comfortable actually seeing the actual receipts, it sounds like we can go to the, we can come to the S A U and look at them. Um, so, so what are people thinking about, um, how they want to tackle this process?
Um, I personally would like to see the receipts because like when I see, you know, twenty-one sixty-three at Country Three Corners from, you know, this staff member, I'm like, that doesn't really help me. What did they buy? And so seeing their receipts would be good. And, um, another thing that I had um, an issue with was that there's so many different Zoom accounts for different people. And I had mentioned that to Chris before and he said he was gonna look into it and was wondering also if we could just do one for the school or what, because it was like, it wasn't like a cheap amount for each one. And I just feel like there was probably a cheaper way.
Right, and, and so there wasn't a cheaper way at the time. We have since evaluated and, and we've taken advantage of a free account from the D O E. But we needed to have Zoom accounts because we had to, um, have meetings and run school and, and do all the other things that we needed to do. Um, and, and so I, I think some of that comes to your evaluation of me. If we're mismanaging and you think we're mismanaging, you give that direction to me. We still have to pay the bill that was assigned. Like, I mean, we already incurred that debt. Um, and, and so it, that should reflect in my evaluation.
All right, so it sounds like, uh, Rochelle will be, so we have a, a week where we have to sign a manifest, so she'll come up to the S A U and, and review those receipts. Great.
No, and I, and just for the record, I won't be wearing a mask because I have a medical condition. Because when I went in to sign something, I was harassed. And, um, she basically told me to leave until somebody else ran out and said, no, we need your signature. So, just for the record.
Okay, so we'll have to manage something, um, because we, we do have, we'll, we'll figure something out, um, and
And just also to reiterate, um, you know, if, if someone doesn't want to make the trip to the S A U, I'm always open to answering questions by telephone, email, anything like that. If, if you have one, two, or three specific questions, um, where I could fill up that invoice in, in re- in verbally or, or written, provide that information. I, I'd rather not email anything like that through, you know, non-secure channels, but conversations, I'm always open to doing that with any board member, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so will that process work with people reviewing it, talking to Chris if you have a question, going to the S A U that week of the manifest? To make sure you have what you need and then we have to sign within the week so that we pay our vendors. Is, is that a process that sounds doable?
We don't have to go the S A U, correct? We could just make a phone call if we have questions.
Okay.
And we're still gonna do it through PandaDoc?
Well, and I guess that's a question. We use PandaDoc, um, but PandaDoc, because it's cheaper, doesn't allow us to certify the signing if everyone who's listed doesn't sign. And so what you've experienced this month has been, some of you have had to sign a couple different times the same thing. Because we have to go back through the whole process.
Okay.
So I am going to, um, I, I think for Ware, get DocuSign, which allows the majority of the board, uh, to sign and we can move forward. Um, everyone can still see it, um, but the certification can happen because we, we just need a majority of the board to sign.
And that was what we had prior to PandaDoc, correct?
The Docu, it's just more expensive. We were trying to save money, um, but it, it, it it complicated the process. It's not a ton more, but, um, but it will be just so you know, it'll probably be coming from DocuSign.
As a board, can we, um, make a motion to delegate the task of signing the manifest, manifest to, um?
It has to be the two people, but yep.
The two people, like, could we?
You could have a committee. If you had a committee who wanted to, you know, take on that responsibility of at least two people.
Can I make the motion to
Sure.
create a manifest committee?
Sure. Do I have a second? Okay, we don't have one at this point. I think it's a great idea and I think, you know, we might get back to it, but I think. Okay, so, but, but the majority, so that's three people needs to have signed off. Ideally, all of us, because we're all charged with.
Well, and we want everyone to be comfortable. Like I want, where Rochelle, your questions are answered and we're not trying to hide anything. And so just the balance between that and, and making sure that we keep things flowing and we pay people.
Okay, does that process work with the administration? Yes. Okay, good. All right. So we are up to the second public comment of the night. If you have one that does not involve, go ahead.
I, I think there was another new, Rochelle had wanted to talk about in-person meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. Sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. So school board in-person timing. Go ahead, Rochelle.
Um, I just wanted to see how people were feeling now. That the vaccine's out and that I think it would just make it easier. We can sign these manifests in person. We can see each other in person. And I just think, you know, we have to go back to normal at some point.
Yeah, good point. You know, I think I'm with you. I'm getting vaccinated Saturday. I'm really excited about that. And, and I miss, like, we have a connection if we're all in the same room in a way that we don't necessarily look in through screens. So that would be great. The only, my only concern, and this is not a reason not to do it, but I look at how many people attend these meetings virtually that don't come when we're in person. So we're going to go back to a smaller audience. That's, that's the only sad part for me, but I'm certainly open to it. But what are other people thinking?
I'm interested in going back.
Okay. As far as Daniel, Sarah, I know you don't have anything to compare it with. Any thoughts?
Is there a way that we could still have like a live stream so that people could participate? Because I know the teachers and there's still going to be a large population, portion of the population that won't be vaccinated yet. And so I would still like for them to be able to participate via Zoom. So maybe we could think about that, but I, I am in favor of meeting in person as well.
So Jackie, I don't know if you or Greg want to talk to. We had some logistics about being in person and streaming and web access.
We did an RFP, if you remember, Greg came before and I, I don't know when it's coming, but we did. We went through a process net with vendors and we do have some equipment coming that will allow for live streaming. What I'm unclear, like I'm not, what's trickier is the still being on Zoom and being able to have participation at the same time. People would be able to email. They could watch live like they could on the public access channel before. And then, but this would be able to stream to YouTube or you know, somewhere more web-based. What's trickier is that interaction, how to, how to facilitate that.
So I wonder, could I make a motion? I'll make a motion that we charge the superintendent with working through those logistics and letting us know in April, maybe with a goal of being back for our May meeting in person? Do I have a second for that?
I'll second Christine.
Any discussion about that timeline or?
Jackie, do you feel like that's enough time for you?
Oh, yeah. I, I mean, I think as soon as we get the equipment, it's, it's pretty slick. I think it'll be great and it'll move, we're going to share it between all the, the districts in the SAU. And I, I think we won't lose all of the participation. It's, we need to check legally about what the participation can be electronically. I, I think we're in a new place as far as that's concerned. So, so, so we'll look into that.
Okay, just a point that if we do allow participation through that and we're doing it through like a Zoom kind of type, if people could have their cameras on along with state, along with their names. I know with the town, when we were doing the deliberative session and different things, you had, in order to get into a meeting, you had to have your name on your picture. And then if you were talking, you needed to have, I believe you had to have your camera on.
Do we have a delivery date for that or estimate or anything like that?
Greg shaking his head.
We're still, we just got the revised quote from the vendor, which I'll be reviewing with, with Jackie tomorrow.
Do you have any idea about how much it, it costs?
Yeah, about $30,000 like we talked about. And so we're splitting that between the districts using CARES funds.
The biggest unknown we have is the delivery date for the equipment.
Right.
Because of the constraints out there with COVID affecting international shipping and stuff.
Any other questions? Okay, so roll call vote to charge Jackie to investigate and report back in April with the ideal goal of being back in person in May. Christine?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Wendy, yes. Yay. Thanks for bringing that up Rochelle. Okay, so public comment. If you have a public comment that does not involve any body parts or profanity that you would like to share at this point, please raise your hands and I will recognize you. All right, so Heidi.
Hey guys, I just had a clarifying question for Jackie about SB 135 using last year's enrollment for adequacy. I looked it up, but I just want a clarification. Is this just for next year as a result of COVID and reduced enrollment this year? Or is this going to be a forever change in the way that we look at adequacy? I'm just curious.
My understanding is it's just a response to COVID and it's just for this year.
Thank you. That's what it looked like online, but I just wanted clarification. Thanks.
And then if you want to say anything about your time at the board or anything, you're welcome to. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we're up to the, the agenda item for school board member reports or proposals for future agendas. So if there's something you'd like to see on a future agenda, this would be the time to sort of speak up. The things we currently have, as Jackie pointed out, was the transportation study. We want to analyze our copier usage and see if we can reduce that. So that's also on there. The other thing that seems to have fallen off is, is we want to look at the leasing options. I think we had some more questions around the tech plan, leasing laptops. I want to get that back on. Anything else?
Well, what we have on the, about the possible reopening for six through eight?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think that's going to be old business, but yes. Yeah, but absolutely. That's going to be the thing that's going to bring everybody to the meeting. Anyone else? Okay, so the next thing we're going to do is we're going to go to non-public. So what's going to happen is, well, I will declare that we're in non-public because we're remote. Jackie will put up a breakout room invite, so you accept that. And the board will go into that meeting. The rest of y'all are welcome to, to stay here. But when we come back, we'll just have a, a motion for, for this action and then we'll be done. So you, you're welcome to stick around or, or not. If our next meeting is April 20th, 2021, it will be Zoom, but it might be our last one. So for a non-public session, RSA 91-a colon three sub two sub C, we need an individual roll call vote to go into non-public. So Christine?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yeah.
And Wendy, yes. It's like it's just us. So do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the nominations.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rochelle seconded. Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote to accept the nominations. Christine?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
And Wendy, yes. Okay, great. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Excellent. A roll call vote to go on with your evening. Rochelle?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yes.
Wendy, yes. Good job, you guys. You're now officially school board people. And we will see you in a month.